Okay, everybody, we can start our work session now. Good evening. Let's go through the agenda. We'll start with the approval of the minutes from February. We've had them and everyone's had a chance to review. May I have a motion or ...
I'll second.
... a motion to approve by Marie and a second by Andres. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we can go to the table of applications. We did receive some new info on that. I think, is this yours, Andres?
It is. It is. And we already did seeker as well on this. I think based on seeing the proposed new site plan that we have there, where the part, where the barn moves farther north away from the residents down to the south, and the fact they're planning a hedgerow across the south or the southern end there, I think they've also reduced the size of the barn enough to accommodate the size of the lot as well. I'm going to move that we approve this variance for the side setback.
I'll second that.
All right. Any conditions or ...
I think we go by the site map as, you know, they have to have the hedgerow that they propose there, which I think is something we spoke of at the last meeting, that some kind of buffering would be beneficial because that is an opening, a little bit of a clearing that the neighbors could see, and that was one of the things that they objected to the site. You know, the applicant had other options where, in theory, they could have a really, they could have 100-foot-long barn that was only 10, 20 feet wide, but I think that would be more of an obstruction or a visual eye source to that area as well. So I think this is kind of that happy medium that we've struck, where the applicant has reduced the size of the barn. They tried other options, they weren't feasible, so this one does meet their needs. There wasn't any adverse impact that we were able to find to the environment from this.
Right.
Would we add a condition about no commercial use for this?
Isn't that general to the zone?
Already?
It is.
Sorry to inform it.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Did we get a second?
Mike.
Mike? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good work.
Thank you, guys.
See you later.
Sorry you brought your stuff.
That's all right.
Okay, so on tonight's agenda, we can see if we have any questions for clarification. Number one?
I don't think I have any questions for clarification.
All right. So did, and we did get additional info on it, like this stuff right here?
We got the comparison of the other lots and then the petition.
Who provided that?
The applicant did it.
Oh. Well, that's nice. And I'm sorry, go ahead. What else?
The petition.
Okay. Yeah.
She's probably in the drive.
Yeah, it is in the drive.
Yep.
All right. Nothing else on that one? Number two? Anybody have any questions to clarify on that?
I had no questions. The only comment I had for Andy is, is if this was a regular school district, would they even have to come here for this type of matter? And the thought is because it's a private school, they do, but since if it's not, if it was a public school, they probably wouldn't even have to be here for this application.
So public schools have certain ...
Examsions?
Yeah. I haven't looked at that for a playground for a public school.
Anything else on two? All right. Anything to clarify on three?
No, I haven't had one question.
Four? Pretty simple. And five. Is there anything going on with planning board on this one?
Yes. They're going, they're scheduled to go to the April 11th planning board meeting.
Okay. For what?
For the site improvements. Part of the site modifications include the proposal of less parking, so that's why they need to ...
So is there anything that this board would certainly or for sure learn from planning, or are we, we have enough now, in your opinion?
Will this applicant have to come back for that variance for parking?
Well, you could table it.
I'm not looking to unless we think we have to, I guess is my question, to learn something from that process. It doesn't seem like, there's nothing on the sheet that indicates that, or from what I saw.
It's hard to say. I don't know if the planning board may have some concerns that would result in some changes. It's always possible. The other thing is, we discovered kind of late in the game that with these changes, they're going to be reducing the lot, or increasing the lot coverage, reducing the green space, so they're going to have to come back for that in April.
Oh. Okay.
I wonder if we should just take this off and do one presentation. Anybody hear from that?
I mean, there's two things to consider that. If they're going to reduce the green space, that's usually goes in, you know, kind of coincides with other things in terms of, you know, all these other things. It's not just, oh, we're going to, you know, we either approve or deny one, and else, no, we're going to come back again, and that's what we try to avoid, is having to come back again, and then does our last judgment think differently of the whole application?
Well, if there's somebody here from there, maybe you can, in the break.
See him, but ...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying in the break, because this, to me, just seems like nowadays nobody gets out of the car. It's a fact of life.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Any other things we need to speak about at the work session?
One general question on the, on the Penfield Road one that I have the sign. As they develop those properties, does the owner have to put in the section of the road back there? Is that the way that's working?
I believe that's how, yeah. I believe they're supposed to put in their section of road, so, and I'm not sure where they are as far as putting that road in there.
Yeah, I think there's, you know, the first four or five houses aren't developed and there's nothing.
Obviously, if they put the road in, it's not going to do anything anyway, because you can't get to it.
Right. Well, it's weird, because you got a little section behind this, the title office.
For some reason, I felt like the residents were required to put it in, a commercial spot.
I know the goal is to connect them all, but ...
Because it would seem odd to landlock in the spot of business that's required to have a road connecting.
No, I think they have to.
Yeah.
With joint access, shared access.
I felt like that was, I remember hearing something about that, if someone popped in the middle, it would require the others to ...
Well, no, because there's no, they would if they were going to develop it.
Only if they develop, or if they stay the same, they don't have to ...
No, because there's no, there's nothing before any of the boards to require them to do that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anything else? All right, then we will stand in recess for now and reconvene for the public hearings at 7:00. Thank you. And welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be our public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up to that podium, give us name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief being requested should be granted. After the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will most likely have some questions, and then we'll ask anyone in the audience to come up and do the same thing, give us name and address, and speak about the application if they choose to do that. Once the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's application, applications, and take care of any other business the board has. Members of the public are welcome at both the public hearings and the deliberation session, although the deliberations generally are time reserved for conversations amongst board members, board members with staff, and sometime with our council. We have a medium-sized agenda tonight. I characterize it as that. You are welcome to stay, as I said. If you do not want to stay or cannot, you can certainly call tomorrow the town and find out what action the board took on any particular item. We like to point out every month that we think the town does a very good job of notifying citizens that applications are going to be heard and that citizens have a right to come in and speak about them. The town does that in various ways, including sending postcards to neighbors that live within a certain distance of the application property. The town posts the agenda on the town website, posts it here at the town hall, and makes applicants put up signs on the property so people driving by know that there's something pending. And we think it works well. We certainly welcome everybody's opinion. That being said, I'd ask people to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you very much. May we have the first application, please?
John Gramlich, 1217 Monroe County Line Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request area variances to allow a subdivided lot with less lot width and less lot area than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 1217 Monroe County Line Road. The property is owned by John and Beverly Gramlich and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 096.01-2-13.2, application number 19Z-0009.
Good evening.
Hi.
As you heard, my name is John Gramlich, my wife Beverly's here, and my civil engineer, Bob Kiefer. What we're looking to do is, my son and daughter-in-law are looking to buy our present house at 1217 County Line Road. We're looking to subdivide off a smaller lot on the front of the property into the south for my wife and I to build a house on. We presented last week to the planning board. They looked favorably on the proposal, and so we're here tonight to talk to you guys about zoning. And I just want to thank, I know, Mira, you came out to talk to my wife about what we're proposing. I don't know if any other board members did, but we thank you for doing that. I guess the, I would like to talk to, we did a survey kind of of the neighborhood, and 40 houses, kind of the 40 closest houses to our neighborhood, of those 40 houses, 62.5% are less than two acres. And also, 75% of them are less than 200-foot frontage. And the closest 12 houses to us, there's properties this, properties this, 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 here, 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 all but this one and this one are all less than .9 acres. So this is a two-acre parcel, this is, I think, 8.36 acres. So all the rest of these are below .9 acres. So we feel that the subdivision and the variances that we're asking for, going down to 1.125 acres for a lot, which would be right here, and I believe, I know I gave you guys a copy of that information, you should have that, as well as the information of each of the other addresses. So we feel that we're within what the rest of the neighborhood looks like. There are only, I think, five houses that are in Monroe, or in Wayne, in Penfield, along County Line through this stretch. There's 1221, which does not have any frontage at all. The frontage comes in from Salt Road, that's Ron Wilbert's, Power House, Phil's, the Long Henry's, Mr. Kiefer's, and then the next property. And so the next closest houses in Penfield are over on State, and they're 1.2 miles away.
Okay.
So we're open?
Petition.
Ah, thank you. Yes, we also did a petition, which I believe you also have. We have 21 signatures from neighbors, all in favor of what we're doing, so.
All right.
So I do have some questions. As far as the area of the lot, you're taking a very large lot and subdividing off a smaller lot. Why couldn't you take more of the main lot, of the principal lot, to make it within the code?
So if we, so for example, if we moved right to the limit, which is 50 foot from the front of the present house, we would only go up to 1.25 acres. The other option would be to do a long sliver along the south side, but it would be no real value and only devalue the main property. And what we don't want to do by what we're doing, especially because it's my son's property, I mean, my son and my daughter-in-law are going to be living in that house, I don't want to put the lot line very right close to their front door, and I don't want to just take a sliver along the south side of their property away from them and devalue that property. So trying, our mission was to try to maintain the value of that present property and have a quality house for the other parcel as well.
It's probably fair to say that that sliver going back wouldn't add much to your property value, correct?
Right.
You mentioned ...
And then, and then that, well, there's dedicated wetlands back in there and everything else, so why interrupt that?
And then you mentioned landmarks with, on the property in your ...
Landmarks?
Maybe I'm wrong. Oh, it says wet, it's wetlands. I read it as landmarks.
Yeah. Yeah, there are dedicated wetlands in the property towards the west.
The principal lot, the lot that you're subdividing from, is that how it's been since you've owned the lot?
Yeah. We built the house there in 1985. We bought that parcel and built that house in 1985.
And that parcel is as-is, so you didn't ask for some sort of change years ago, or?
No. Nope. I have nothing.
Any other questions from the board?
Do you know if those other lots that you mentioned that are, you know, less than two acres, were those partizoney, were they pre-existing, non-conforming, or?
So these are all in Wayne County, so we're right on the corner. Yeah. These are all, all Wayne County properties. So I think that's within their zoning.
Right.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Harold, I'm not sure if you know, but could these lots have at one point been ...
You said you'd call them theirs.
Shit, I did, what you, what did you do?
Man, taking another swig of coffee. I hope that's coffee.
It is, it is. Wow, see, look, it's his fault. Could this, could these lots have all been larger, the surrounding lots, and then if the road got widened at one point, these lots have all become smaller by any chance? Or do you know?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, at one point, you know, I think we see a lot of applications where there's lots that are 4.9 acres because there was takings basically from a road getting widened or things like that. Is that a situation that could have happened here at one point as well?
It could have. I don't really, I don't have the knowledge of the history.
Ask Harold.
Well, maybe we should ask Harold. He would know. He would have. He was here then.
All right. Are you ...
I'm all done.
Any other board questions?
I'll phone a friend.
He's now totally confused.
Because I don't see any Harold.
That's the point.
That's the point. He used to be there.
So I don't think the road's been, the road has not been widened in the last 35 years, so.
Yeah, I was thinking even farther back, if at some point, because a lot of times we see lots that are, when, you know, a lot of lots are smaller, it's because there was a taking from a road getting widened or something like that by the county or state.
Yeah, most, most of these are under 100-foot frontage, too.
Yeah. All right. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
David Cox, PE Pastor Associates, 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Rochester Christian School, 260 Embry Road, Rochester, New York, 14625, request a conditional use permit under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.1-E1I of the code to allow a new playground at 260 Embry Road. The property is owned by Rochester Christian School Incorporated and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 108.11-1-1.1, application number 19Z-0010.
Good evening, board members. I'm David Cox, the Pastor of Associates. RCS has been around for over 100 years, so they're a great, great school. Currently, they have, their existing playground is down in this area right here, just south of the school building, and it's, it's older. And just recently, they've had a very generous donor who has given money to put in a, a new playground that, here's some, just some pictures of what it's going to look like, a real nice playground area, and that's just going to go kind of right.
Did you take that one photo at night, by the way?
And then print it really dark for some reason. I'm not really sure why I did that. So, yeah, we're going to put it adjacent to the existing. There's a couple playground structures that are older that they're going to take down. This will help to supplement that. And, yeah, per code, we need the conditional use permit. To my knowledge, there already is an existing conditional use permit for the playground, but since kind of it's an expansion or addition to, they want us to come back for it to get reapproval. And I can take any questions you have.
Sure. Do you know, in terms of the usage and time of day and things like that, will the usage maintain the same in terms of the amount of people using the area?
Yeah.
Those kind of things?
Yep, same.
Same, same hours in terms of, you know, general school day hours?
Yep.
It wouldn't be, anything like that? The new structure for the playground that's proposed, it's not taller than the building?
No.
Okay. Also, I have, so some noise, things like that will be on par with what's with the existing playground, because it's the same school, children that are using it?
Same school, children, no increase in children.
Okay. And colors and things like that are typical. I think another picture was just the greens and browns and things like that for slides and actual wood, wood structure. Excellent. And you don't anticipate any additional facilities in terms of parking or demand for those, for those kind of things with a, with a new playground?
Nope.
Excellent. Thank you.
Are the two areas going to be tied together at all?
Just through grass. No hardscape, though.
Okay. So they'll be separate and distinct. I mean, that's got whatever that has crushed the wood or ...
Yeah, it's mulch area. Yeah.
So you do that in both areas?
Yeah.
So the former playground is staying?
Yes. There are a couple structures that are being taken down, but the majority of it is staying.
Okay. I can't remember what surfaced on that.
There is some, some mulch area, and then there's grass area as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? No. Andy, are we aware of any issues or complaints about the use of the play? I'm certainly not.
No.
Okay. Are you aware of any issues that there have been?
No.
Does a school let the neighbors go up and use it, or is there?
There's no ...
No fence, right?
Yeah, there's no fence, there's no official policy.
Yeah, okay.
But, I mean, it's tucked in here, and, you know, for the most part, I think it's just used by, by the students.
Okay. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Bob Hyler, and I live at 1505 Creek Street, and my property is just on the south side of the Rochester Christian School. And so I listen to all the noise all day long from the kids there, but I, you know, that's, that's not a major problem, really. But the kids are there. But when he talked about after-school hours, there's still kids playing there. There's people there, adults, that are there after school, up through the evening and in the night. And there's teenagers playing there, they shouldn't be there. They bus people in and they bring people in there to play in the park. So everybody in the neighborhood goes there and from where else, I don't know. So it's a noise problem, it's a security problem, because you don't know who is there. For me, I'm 100 feet from that playground on that south side. So it's a security problem, because nobody is there after school hours. There's people there, but they don't watch anything, they don't, they don't check anything. And they've had problems there before. So my problem is noise, security reduces the value of my house, my property. What I would recommend the board to do is to have the Rochester Christian School put a buffer between that playground and my property. Now, it could be a fence, it could be shrubs, it could be trees, it could be whatever, to reduce the noise, reduce the visibility, and improve the security, because nobody watches. There's nobody wa, they've had problems in the past. So you said one thing, that the major part of the playground, that's the older part, you're saying that's going to stay?
Yes.
So that's 100 feet from my house. Now, the one thing I am glad that you want to build that in the back, in the west side of, so that's, that's, that's where the whole playground should have been played and put in, in the first place. But I never was consulted, and it's been in there for quite a while now. So it isn't a major problem, but I'd like to see the board recommend that they put a buffer between Rochester Christian School and my property for the reasons I stated. I thank you very much.
I have one question for you. Is the, from where your home is located, is it the, is your home, is the old playground between your home and the new proposed playground? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, is it farther away from existing? Yeah. Do you mind holding up that map and just showing us where your home is?
My property is right here.
Okay. Okay, so that's, so the old playground is between ...
They're going to build this back here, but this should have been built, moved back there, and I had no control over that.
Can you show the side?
Yeah. Show that side, and then also ...
I'm right here. And this is, this is, this part of the playground, they're going to keep.
Right.
And they're going to build this here. And so when I went, when I, when I went upstairs a while back here, and I saw they were going to build it back up there, that was the land. But as they say, if they, if they would put, you know, shrubs, trees, or something along this area here, so.
You don't think this is necessarily going to add to your problem?
Huh?
You don't think that the new section's necessarily going to add to the problem?
No. It's this area.
Yeah, you guys need that.
Mike, I'm sorry.
But even in this area, everybody comes there day and night, and they've had problems in the past.
Can you elaborate on that?
Huh?
That they've had problems in the past? Are you telling me, like, sheriffs have been called?
Yes, they have been.
Okay.
They have been.
That's important.
And they've had parties here in the parking lot.
Okay.
And that's, time after time, that's happened.
Okay. We, I'm not sure that would be related to the playgrounds.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, it is. Because they were here, they're here. There were kids on top of the, at top of the school one night.
Okay. So you're, you're probably not in position to comment on whether your client would be willing to do the buffering, I don't know if you ...
I'm assuming not, and, I mean, one of the problems is that you, you know, you put in a buffer for this property, then it's this property, and then this property, and then this property.
No, there isn't. It's just me.
Well, it would affect more than just you.
Right.
Only one is me. These, this is all woods in here. There's no effect to anybody else except me.
They might think differently. So I'm just concerned of sending the president to then have multiple neighbors be asking for ...
Well, so one way to address that is for your client to go and knock on doors and talk with people in the neighborhood. I mean, yes, you heard me say earlier about getting notification, and we have one person here, but there are other folks there, and many applicants do that. We saw that from the first one.
And nobody's going to care. Nobody's going to care there.
Well, then, that would, that would make it easier, if he's the only one that has a concern. That would solve the dilemma you're worried about.
The other houses are set back more in a way, so.
Yeah, so it could be a relatively unique circumstance.
Yeah, these are, there's all woods in here. These, these on Royal Crest, and the Veterans Building is in the middle, right here.
Right.
That's actually, I'm glad you referenced that Veterans Building, because when they came in to ask permission to have that, this room was full. And there were a lot of people, I think, including the school, that were concerned about that going there. That, that was tabled for a month. Everybody in that neighborhood, everybody. Many people in that neighborhood got together, and the next month, there were no issues. Everything was ironed out. So, anyway.
When, before the veterans got it here, about maybe a couple years ago, they've been in there now, but the people that were there before there were disadvantaged and disability people. And what they were doing is they were coming over into the park.
Well...
And that's why people, that's why people were concerned. But now with the veterans, you know, there's no problem. There's no, but before it was.
Okay.
Before it was. I have a question. I just need some clarification.
Could you guys go back, and do you need, only because they're having trouble with the mic?
That's fine. You, you can go back.
Okay.
If they didn't build this playground, so if everything stayed the same and stayed as it was, you would still have the problems that you're talking about, correct?
Yes.
So, so your issue isn't necessarily the building of the playground?
No.
It's just the way that it exists now?
It's the way it exists now, and in, in adding more, and, and making a buffer to, just like I said, security, noise primarily.
Yeah. Mr. Cox, do you know if the donation was specifically earmarked or conditioned as for a playground?
Yeah, it was specifically for this playground.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Why don't you come on up?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Arnold Smank. I live in Fairport, but two of my grandchildren go to Rochester Christian School, and my wife and I are the ones that are donating the playground. So I thought it would be appropriate for me to come and just answer any questions that you might have. And yes, the donation is specific to build a playground for Finney, or for RCS. The old playground that's there now has been there for thirty-plus years, and much of it is in poor condition. And our, the school's intent is, once this new playground is up, would be to remove a few of the elements of the old playground that we deem are no longer safe. We also wanted to move the new playground further from the parking lot and the driveway as a safety issue, and to move it closer to the building so that it would be easier to, to monitor and control, and to keep, keep an eye on the kids. So, looking at the long-term goals of the school, this was a much better placement than the existing playground area, and that's what the, the school's decided is the best place for it. And I think it, it will be removed further from the homeowners, and, you know, it just gonna allow the kids to have a lot more fun, and safer, because like I said, the old playground parts of it are, need to come down.
Okay. Thanks for your time and your generosity. Any, anyone else on the board?
I was just wondering, is there any opportunity to move the playground a little more wrapped around the building as, as opposed to use the structure as a more, more of a buffer to noise? So if it wrapped a little bit farther around the building, wouldn't be much, but in a sense, if you went up a little bit more, or up into the left?
We, we could move it some, but we don't wanna go so far that you're completely disconnected from the existing playground.
I'm just wondering, in terms of a sense from a neighbor, he was talking about if there was a buffer, could we use the corner of the building as a buffer, so then the noise wouldn't go towards his, and that would, in a sense, that's, that issue would be resolved?
The, part of the problem, we don't wanna tuck it too far behind the building to create any line-of-sight issues for when teachers are out there. They need to be able to see all parts of the playground, and we don't wanna have any buildings blocking the two.
Sure. Yep, no, that makes sense.
There, there's also a long-term goal, potentially putting ball fields here, and to move it further back would, would impede the ability to do that. We're not, you know, not coming here today to request that, but, you know, five- and ten-year plans have, have potential for, you know, maybe a soccer field or something like that in that area. And to put the playground there would just, would eliminate that as an option.
Well, hold on, let's see if they're, are you guys finished? Okay, come on back up, sir, and ask your question.
You were intending to leave this part of the playground here, is that correct or not?
Parts of it will come out.
Why don't you take it all out, and put it, move it back over with the rest of this new one that you wanna build there, and then that would be fine, and then you put a buffer in there. It was just one part of it. That's the two section. There's a, it's an area about like ten by, ten by twenty. And you could move that from here over to here, and make that incorporated part of the, the, the new public playground, and then, then you would have...
And, and, not to interrupt, but if you wanna go out in the hall and talk, fine by us, but I, I wanna make sure, Mr. Cox, that you're comfortable having, you know, talking here. I will tell you, I'm not speaking for the entire board, but I'm, I, I am a little concerned about potential issues there, and I don't mean honestly noise from kids during the day. But teenagers, or whomever else hanging out in the parking lot, I, I'm, I'd like to see whether we have reports from the sheriff, deputies having been called there or, or not. And I'd also like to know your client's position on limiting the use to only students, or to hear from other neighbors that say, hey, if, boy, if you make them limited to only students, you know, my kids enjoy a good relationship with the school, and we'd love to, to use the park, playground.
I think the part of the problem is, you know, just like any public school, of how do you limit the use of that playground, you know, that I can go to any public school and use...
Well, you, you could put up a sign that says, for, for private use only. You, I mean, you gotta enforce that, but you could put it up.
Yeah, they wouldn't have a problem putting a, a sign up.
Well, well, you say that, but then you may have fifteen neighbors mad at the school because they did it, no offense, but because one person has come in and complained. I'm just, does the playground have to go up in the next month, is what I'm saying. You're nodding. Why don't you tell us why? It's March.
It's March, right, and the school year ends in June.
Right.
And my granddaughter wants to play on the playground.
Well, be aware that if this board votes and approves it, it may approve it with conditions that may, may cost more money, may cost more time. I just, it's fine. And the board frankly can table it with or without your consent.
I, I understand, it's up to the discretion of, but you asked a question.
Right.
Giving you an honest answer. I mean, we, we proposed this back in, in October, and, you know, to, to the, the school board, and we've been anxious to get the, the playground is already built. It's been, you know, preassembled at the, at the manufacturer, and it's on a truck waiting to be delivered and installed. I mean, it would be our hope that it would, could get installed next week.
Well, then, if that's the case, I'd suggest you go in the hall and have a conversation, and see if you can come back in and say, we've agreed. If you can't, you can't. I don't see the harm in doing that.
Okay.
But it's up to you. I can't force you to do that.
Mr., I appreciate your thoughts.
Yeah. Okay, you gonna try that?
Yeah, but we can try that.
All right, well, we'll hold this hearing in abeyance, and then call the next one. And when you're ready, let us know, because we'll finish whatever one we're on and get right back to you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Eugia, sixty-three Finchwood Lane, Penfield, New York, one four five two six, requests a special permit under section two fifty dash ten point three, and section two fifty dash ten point thirteen dash C of the code to allow a second building-mounted sign at twenty-one hundred Penfield Road. The property is owned by JLZ Properties LLC, and is own business, non-retail. SBL number one three nine point zero eight dash one dash six one, application number nineteen Z dash zero zero one one.
Good evening. My name is Eugia. I'm the owner/dentist of the new dental office on twenty-one hundred Penfield Road. As Andy has mentioned, my application is for the installation of a second sign on the south side, the north side of the building, in addition to the sign that's already been approved, that's going to be on the south side of the building facing four forty-one. The reason for this application is that the main entrance to my building is actually from the north side, and that's where, that's also where the parking area is. So I feel like it's, it's fitting for me to put my branding information above the main entrance of the building. And this sign is not going to be illuminated, and the style of the sign is, I feel, is fitting for the rest of the, the, the style of the building, and I don't feel like it's, it's gonna be a disturbance in the neighboring areas. And I apologize, I did not bring any graphics displaying what it looks like. I believe when I submitted the application, I did submit...
Yeah, we have.
The, okay, so if anybody is interested in what it looks like, I have it on my phone. I can show it to you. So I'm open to any suggestions or any questions, and feel free.
According to the notes we were given here, you're allowed for building, for one building-mounted sign, ninety-six square feet, is that correct? Are you aware of that?
Ninety-six square feet?
Yeah.
Yes. It's been approved already, the...
Now, what?
Thank you.
I guess what I'm asking you is, your current sign that's been approved, I think, is thirty-two square feet?
Okay.
How big is this sign? Is it the same size as the one in the front?
This is going, going to be a little bit smaller.
All right, so, so it won't be more than double that thirty-two square?
No, no, no. It would be maybe three-quarters of the size, but it's the same style.
Why do you, now, you're, this properties is, is currently serviced by a driveway from Penfield Road, correct?
Correct.
And that's the entrance to the building? I mean, that's how you would...
That's how you would drive into the back of the building where the parking area is.
So why do you need a building-mounted sign to identify the entrance? I mean, it's kinda obvious where the entrance is gonna be.
I just, I feel like it's fitting to, to, for the branding of my office, that it's just right above the entrance. It's not, I guess it's not for identification purposes, it's just for the style of the building, and I have actually designed a space for the sign there, so if there's going to be a no sign, then it's gonna look like it's blank.
Are, are you going to have a monument sign in the front on Penfield Road?
I didn't plan for that.
Okay. If we were to grant you this second sign, would you be willing to accept the condition to forego a monument sign?
Okay, that's fine.
Because that's, in general, what we've done with businesses that were seeking a second building-mounted sign? You're allowed one of each, a monument, a freestanding monument or a monument sign and a, and a building-mounted sign?
Okay.
Okay. Color's gonna be similar to what you have in the Penfield Road sign?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And it's going where it's indicated here?
Yes, yes, right in the gables area.
All right. And not eliminated, illuminated?
Not illuminated on the, the north side. On the south side, it will be.
Right. Okay. That's all I have.
What are your hours? Do you have night, evening hours?
Um, on two nights of the week, I'm open until six-thirty.
Okay, because it gets dark at five in December, so I just wondered why it wouldn't be illuminated.
It's just a cost issue.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And I, I have a light in the parking area, so, you know, it, it would be somewhat visible.
Okay.
Andy, could you just briefly recite the issue and the requirements as far as you're aware about the future of using the road in the back on the north side as the only entrance to, to all of these properties? I just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
Part of the condition of rezoning this strip of land was that there would be a shared access road behind the properties coming from Harris Whalen Park. This property right now is served by an entrance on Penfield Road, and under tho, those conditions, that Penfield Road entrance is supposed to be eliminated, so that the only access will be through the rear shared access road.
And that will happen, what determines when that happens?
Uh, it's gonna be determined by the development. As, as the properties get developed, the, they will be putting in that portion of the, of the road on that property, and eventually it'll, it'll be connected.
Okay. So at some point, there's not gonna be an ability for anyone to pull in off of Penfield, directly off of Penfield Road onto the property?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that.
Are you aware of how many properties between Harris Whalen Road and, and yours?
I believe there's four or five.
Yeah, that's what I would, thought I counted, okay.
And how, how many of those are currently being used?
You mean occupied by residents?
Or for, or commercial, yes.
I believe all the ones in between, well, the first one has, has already been turned into a business. It's an orthodontist office.
Right.
So between him and I, it's all still residential. I'm, I'm not aware of any developments in those areas.
Okay.
So I, I think the access road, you know, it will be built when all of those areas are developed, and we can connect the roads, then we can use it.
So who, then, I just wanna make sure I understand, who then will, if, if this sign on the north side is approved, who will, who will see it?
Um...
If that road's not there yet?
So, my hope is, because I'm behind the elementary school, so I feel like it can serve a slight marketing purpose for the, for the school, like, the students, the parents or staff that work there.
Okay.
It's slightly visible from the, their parking lot.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, if you're ready, come on back up, Mr. Cox.
So we went out in the...
Yeah, the speaker.
Oh, we did have somebody about the sign? No.
No. Oh, okay. False alarm.
All right.
We went out in the hall and, and spoke, and there's a, a tube slide and, and a big, a big playground structure right here that's pretty close to this property. And once we get this new structure in, we'll be able to completely remove that, which will just move a lot of his major complaint further away. So we're, we agreed to completely remove that structure once this playground goes in.
Okay. Come on, come on up there, because I wanna...
The other recommendation that you made was have them put some signs there. This is for students, for the school, Rochester primarily. That would be good, too.
And you're willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
That'll be good, because then that, that, that keeps trash, other people that's not supposed to be there, out of there.
All right.
So thank you much.
Okay, and thank you, all three of you, for going out and, and, and doing that.
All right, I just wanna make sure that we clarify, so we'll put that in as a condition to remove the tube slide, is that what we're calling it?
Right, the existing tube slide.
All of the material that's there.
Yep.
Very good. Anybody else care to speak about this? Thank you very much.
Paul Calucci, DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC, nineteen fifty Brighton Henrietta Townline Road, Rochester, New York, one four six two three. On behalf of Sunny's Diner, requests a conditional use permit under section two fifty dash thirteen point three, and section two fifty dash five point seven dash C one A of the code to allow the operation of a restaurant at nineteen hundred Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by DeMarco Baytown Associates LLC, and is own general business. SBL number zero nine three point zero two dash one dash twenty-three point one one, application number nineteen Z dash zero zero one two.
Thanks, Andy. Paul Calucci with DeMarco Group here tonight, on behalf of DeMarco Baytown Associates, representing our prospective tenant, Sunny's Diner. Joining me is John Gere, who will be the operator of the restaurant. As Andy read, we're here seeking the conditional use permit to operate a sit-down restaurant in the general business zone district. The proposed... The proposed restaurant is to be located in the southern port, portion of the plaza. We've always referred to it as Building G, I think you're familiar, it's on the, the south side, the inline strip building, the space right below the clock tower. It was formerly occupied by Royal Dynasty and has remained vacant for, for some time. So we're excited to have the opportunity to re-tenant that space. In the, the materials I submitted that Andy read off, I had listed the restaurant as a 4268-square-foot space. Since we've been working with Mr. Gere on, on that configuration, it's potential that he may also occupy the next adjacent vacant space, which is a 1,260-square-foot space immediately to the west of this one. So his restaurant could be 5,500 square feet. We're still working through that final floor plan, but for consideration of granting of the conditional use permit, I would like to amend that to be considered up to 5,500 square feet. As you know, the, the, the plaza has adequate ingress and egress, lighting, parking, sufficient this use fits in character with what we have proposed for, for this facility. In fact, it occupied a former restaurant space. Mr. Gere can answer any questions related to the, the actual operation. I'm sure we're familiar with what a family diner is, but if you have specific questions on hours of operation, number of employees, stuff of that nature, he can answer the questions. I did complete, as part of the conditional use permit submission, the factors for consideration, including is it in harmony with the neighboring business or neighboring parcels detrimental to adjacent properties? I'm not gonna run through those, I'm sure you're familiar with them. We've had these types of discussions in the past for restaurant-type uses in the plaza. So it's, it's just another step forward with the redevelopment of Baytown and occupying tenant spaces, we're excited about it, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Great, thank you for coming. Mr. Gere, I do have some questions for you about Sunny's.
Hi, sure, go ahead.
Maybe you could tell me a little bit more about your hours of operation, days of the week, that kind of information, because actually, there might be some people watching, too.
Sure, so on Fridays and Saturdays, we're gonna be from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and the rest of the week will be from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Some people get up early.
And work late, too.
How many employees do you think you'll be using?
Uh, between 35 and 50.
You don't have any plans for outdoor seating, correct?
No, we do.
Okay. Can you tell me a little bit about your menu?
Uh, it's going to be a variety, from the Penfield pancake to, you know, the Webster waffle, and well, all the other breakfast goodies, and-
But the money question is, is breakfast available all day?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good.
Yes, it is, of course.
Are you doing any kind of Grubhub, Uber Eats, where there would be an issue, you know, people coming in and out very quickly?
Uh, we haven't considered that, but there will be takeout.
Okay. Okay, um, that's all the questions I have.
Anybody else from the board? Are you gonna utilize the, you know, like, south or west side of the building for trash? Paul, maybe you can comment on what's back there, I just wanna make sure-
Yeah, sure, so it would be the south side.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so presently, all of the tenants have rear egress for service corridor along the back.
Right.
And there are dumpsters staged along the back, and it's part of the commonery maintenance that we, we offer for, for the tenants, so trash pickup is on a routine basis. In this case, there would also be, there is a grease trap that serviced the former restaurant, it's being, it has been serviced, it will be inspected prior to the operation, it's part of the Health Department application that the restaurant would have to make. The, the trash has not been an, an issue in the past, especially on that side of the plaza, where there is really no residential abutter.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Gere, what kind of signage will you be using? Will you be on the monument sign, or, and I know you have something probably above the door as well, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Consistent with the other Baytown tenants?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry, but finish your thought about the, the signage on the monument sign?
Uh, exactly what you were saying, up top, and then, out to code, and then above the door.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and my, my apologies to Mistress of Vegas for my typo on the-
He's actually been called a lot worse.
That's true. Okay, moving along.
Randy Beebaut, TY Lynn International, 255 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14604. On behalf of McDonald's USA LLC, 2 East and Oval, Suite 200, Columbus, Ohio, 43219, request an area variance to allow less parking spaces than required under Section 250-7.7-D of the code at 2191 Penfield Road. The property is owned by Carmela Espinoza and his own general business, SBL number 140.01-2-1.1, application number 19Z-0013.
May I interrupt you before you begin?
Yes.
We, in our work session today, we discussed that the, this is going before the planning board, too, or has, or will, whatever the case may be.
April 11th, yes.
Do you anticipate, as a result of that, that there may be another need to come back to this board for, what was it, coverage, a coverage issue?
Green space.
Green space?
We kinda discovered late in the game that there's some green space issues.
And are you aware of that?
We are, and, and we have a solution.
Oh, good, okay.
That we, we believe we won't need that, that I'm gonna share with Andy and Zach tomorrow.
The, the only reason I was asking is because I was gonna say, if you wanna come back and do both at once, it's entirely to you, but, okay, good.
I was just gonna pass something out to the board. Just a couple drawings, and then I wasn't certain if the board got the counts, the parking counts that we did.
We did.
Yep, we did.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
There's just a couple graphics on here that I think will be helpful.
So, good evening, I'm Randy Beebaut with TY Lynn. With me tonight is Mary Ellen Guan, owner-operator. So we're here tonight, as you stated, asking for a variance for relief from parking. Based on the code requirements, and we, we did have Andy review our occupancy count plan, which he confirmed we have at 99, that equates to a need of, a requirement of 83 parking spaces. When we take the 20% reduction for being the, the Luamp overlay district, that gets us down to a requirement of 67 spaces. And I would just, as I noted in my letter, I would note that the way the town code is written, parking is based on an occupancy count, and then in addition to that, you have to add parking for the number of employees, sort of double-dipping a little bit, because the occupancy count does take into account the people in the kitchen, which would take into account the employees. Not a big deal, but if you back that out, we would really be down to a requirement of 59 spaces. So currently, there's 51 parking spaces there. We're proposing to reduce that by 10, to have 41 spaces. So from the parking counts that we did on March 8th and March 9th, we did the peak hours on AM, midday, and evening peak hours on Friday, and then we did the midday peak hour on Saturday. The highest parking count was 29 spaces. We also counted the drive-through stacking in those 15-minute intervals. The largest stacking number that we had was 19, which is kind of interesting, because on our revised plan, the first drawing that I shared with you, we showed the site plan with the new side-by-side layout, and from the window where you pick up your food to the farthest point back before it goes out in the roadway is 19 cars. And I would note that this drive-through certainly should be a little more, I mean, in addition to that, it's a side-by-side, but by moving, we are doing a small building addition, which moves the cash window back to the 42 feet. What that allows is for a car in between. So having that car in between, which doesn't happen today, it just makes the operation a little more efficient, and will, will speed up that sort of pain and, and delivery of, of the food. And then the last, the second graphic that I provided is just an overlay, what's shown in black and dashed is the existing, what's shown in red is the proposed layout of the new curbing, the new drive-through and, and striping. This probably has nothing to do, this board, but I would just note, if you looked at the plan that we submitted to the zoning board, it's just slightly different than this plan, and the difference is, we took the dumpster enclosure, which was facing north, is now facing to the east. And we had shared that, and that's the, with the dumpster enclosure facing to the east is the plan that got submitted to the planning board. And that works well, because the refuge company comes in this back entrance, so they can pick that up and then leave wherever they need to. So you can see, most of the parking we're, we're losing is in, is along the back of the site. We lose one or two along the side of the building, and I, the other nice change with this project is, you'll, you'll see that the ADA spaces are being moved to the front versus towards the back of the building, where they end up getting impeded by cars stacked in the drive-through. So certainly, that potentially could still happen, but it certainly should happen less frequently. And I think that's it, that, as the overview of the project, I can answer any questions that the board may have.
So these counts that you did are very helpful, by the way, and did you say that you picked the times that are just typically the busiest?
Correct.
All right, and it, it seems to me that these numbers, they don't, they don't even approach the number of spots that you have now, and, and that are, and, and that are required.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure I'm doing the math.
Yeah, we, we have a, it seems we have a, you know, you know, based on this, you could look at this and demise, that we have a buffer of 10 to 11 spaces at, at the worst time. Now, could there be times that it gets busier? I'm certainly not gonna stand here and tell you that it's not, but I think this is a, a very fair representation of what we're gonna see on site. Typically, the drive-through businesses, not only of this McDonald's, but most McDonald's is 65% to 70% of the business, and I think it, you know, it's, it's reflected in the sales here, and I think, you know, that would probably tend to maybe increase, just because if there's less backup with the side-by-side, people may, you know, use it more, but-
Right, and, and that number that you're talking about, the percentage, is that something that's increased over the years, let's say?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
In fact, the double drive-through seems to be the trend now.
Which is what drove, yeah, which is what drove the, the side-by-side drive-throughs, which have been around for, I don't know, probably longer than I think, but I'm gonna say seven, eight years or something is, you know, when they started becoming more prevalent.
Right. And are there any other nearby uses, properties, that have customers that park at McDonald's and go to their, have you are aware of that? I, I'm, I'm not.
We're not aware of any, no.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board?
I got a question.
Sure.
The, the parking, the longest stretch you have here is on the north, I believe?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
This is north, the parking, the longest section.
Uh, well, I would say the longest section of parking is, I mean, the bulk of the parking is on the south side.
South, this is?
Yes.
Okay, and the way that you show these cars in full key, would a car that's parking there be able to get out safely without hitting that line of cars, or are they gonna be prevented?
Well, I mean, I'm-
It looks pretty tight.
We're, well, it is, I mean, but the, the drive aisle is, is fairly standard width, I mean, it's, it's probably a little tight, but I mean, again, we're, we're sort of depicting the extreme case here. And I would just mention again that, you know, the drive-through operates the way it does today, with moving the window, with new equipment, and some changes inside, you know, certainly, the, the intent is that it's gonna operate more efficiently, so that the stacking here would be less frequent. But, I mean, to your point, we can't really, it would be challenging to widen that driveline, given the constraints that we have.
It just seems that you have the same problem along the building there, too. Here.
Underst-, I mean, we're, we're acknowledging that, and that's part of the reason we moved the ADA. I mean, we're doing all this work, and it made sense to move the ADA, even though it actually is, is costing a little bit more money, because we had to do more pavement and grading to make sure we had the ADA compliance.
Okay.
I have a question. Do your numbers change significantly in the warmer weather in terms of foot traffic versus drive-through?
You get out of your car, Marie, and there's some-
I, I mean, my guess would be no, but I'm, I'm gonna let Mary Ellen speak to that.
Hello.
Hello.
I would say that that weekend that those cars were counted was Shamrock Shake.
Oh.
And I will just tell you, if you haven't had a Shamrock Shake, you should, but everyone wants a Shamrock Shake, so I have more people coming in that weekend, those days, and the following weekend, so very consistent to those two days.
Okay, great, and when the weather hits and we have snow, oftentimes, I find parking spaces disappear, because snow is pushed into a parking spot. How, how many would you anticipate losing?
I have a loader come in several times a season, so if I lose more than one space, I have a loader come and remove the snow.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I just have a quick question. The numbers that you gave as the parking counts, do those include employees?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the actual number of cars in the parking lot at that 15-minute interval. Okay. And your parking requirements, that includes the proposed addition to the building, for when we add square footage to it? I would, I would assume it could potentially add more spots, or not?
Uh, well, it's based on, it's, yes, yes, I mean, it's based on the occupancy count, yes, yes.
I assume if you make the building bigger, occupancy would increase, okay.
Correct, absolutely.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's it. So the public hearings will be adjourned, folks, we'll take a brief recess, five minutes, okay?
Yep.
Five minutes, and we'll reconvene in the back of the room. Thank you all very much. And reconvene, and let's go with the playground.
Oh, forget that, so we're going number two, then.
Correct.
Oh, this is an unlisted action, this is a neg-dec, this act will not result in any significant or adverse environmental impacts.
All right, so Andres has made a motion under seeker to declare this an unlisted action and issue a negative declaration. We have a second?
Second.
Mike Second said, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I am going to make a motion to approve this playground as presented, I will, some conditions, one being the signage identifying the intended use of the playground, and one, and two, to remove the tube slide from the old playground, as was discussed and agreed upon between the applicant and the neighbor.
All right, so we have a motion to approve with conditions as stated.
Second.
A second? Any further discussion?
I can go across some of the key points, if you'd like, to your mouse as well. So we, the applicant did talk about the height, this, this structure will be below the height of the building, so we'll have, the, the actual visual impact will not, it won't stick out across the area. The applicant also said that the noise would not, they didn't intend to increase, because the population of the school will not go up because of the added playground, because their usage will still be the same, they're outside the same times. They don't anticipate any additional parking, because they don't anticipate any additional use during the school day. It's used during the daytime as the intended use, and I think those are it.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And let's go to McDonald's. So, for the seeker, I will make a motion to declare this an unlisted action, and then a further motion for a negative declaration.
Second.
Further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then on the merits, I'd make a motion to approve. I think the applicant's done a good job of presenting, first of all, the need for this, not just for good business purposes, but also honestly to modernize the location, but also demonstrated that the requirements in this particular instance are onerous and frankly unnecessary. So, I see, I don't see any issue with this whatsoever, it's the way things are happening now with drive-throughs. And of course, there are a lot of safety issues and such, which the planning board will address. So, given all that, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Let's go back up to number one.
I make a motion to declare this a type-two action, which requires no further review.
Second.
Further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
As far as the application itself, I make a motion to approve it. It's not going to have an undesirable change in the neighborhood, it looks like there's quite a significant number of properties in the area, albeit some of them in Wayne County, that are similar in description to what they're seeking with the variance in the lot size. It seems as though it's also not undesirable, because they have a petition that was sent by numerous neighbors that approved and requested the passage of this. It's going to have no adverse environmental impact. They're not seeking it of their own making, because of a condition of their own making, just, it seems like it's an absolutely fine application.
I'll second it.
All right, motion to approve for those reasons stated, a second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pete, a question I had on that is, and I think we've talked about this once years ago, but the fact that it's near a municipal border, the neighborhood, as it's used in the test and the statute, extends beyond municipal borders, does it not?
I think you would have to look at the whole, I think it would, you'd have to look at, what's the neighborhood, and the fact that it's on the border.
Right, okay, thank you. Three.
I'm going to make a motion under seeker that this is not an unlisted action, issue a negative declaration, no significant adverse effects.
I will second that. Any further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye. All right, as to the motion itself, I'm going to make a motion to approve this. I have some concerns about the fact that there's no real showing that the signs necessary to adequately identify the business. I think once that back road gets put in, there might be more of an issue there. And the other thing is, I think, once that does get completed, we're going to, this is going to be like a domino effect, everybody's going to be looking for two signs. Be that as it may, she is willing to give up the building mounted sign, and I think putting a sign, excuse me, the monument sign in the front, and to have two signs in the front, none in the back, to me, you know, it doesn't make any more sense than having the signs split, and have two building-mounted signs, and foregoing the monument sign. But I want to make it clear in the resolution that that's the major reason that I'm making the motion, that there not be a building monument sign in the front. I don't think the, I think the sign's in harmony with standards for permitted signs, compatible, not detrimental to neighborhood properties, as somebody pointed out, this is hardly visible, maybe from the school. And again, I don't think...
Which she gets points for being honest about the mark this has.
And I appreciate the careful, it's unusual to hear, unfortunately. So, for those reasons, I would move to approve.
I'll second that with a condition.
Yeah, and it's, the other, the only thing I would add to it is that the total square footage of both signs is still well below what's permitted, and...
Other conditions, no illumination.
No illumination, okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was no illumination for the, for the north side.
Right.
Rear future front?
Correct, yeah. Number four.
Okay, I make a motion for seeker that this is an unlisted action, neg-dec, requiring no further review.
Second.
On the seeker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, and then I would make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for Sunny's diner. I'm certain this is in harmony with the rest of Baytown, there are already several restaurants there, but none very close by Sunny's. I saw no issue with egress, parking facilities, noise, anything like that, and I think it's a fine addition to the community.
I'll second.
Yeah, hopefully that'll sort of beef up that side of the plaza.
It really is, you know, it's been vacant for so long, and I think this is just going to be great there, it'll start...
Pizza Hut's pretty busy, the UPS store is pretty busy, Taylor.
And then it kind of Peters.
Yeah. But, that'll be good.
It's going to be a long day for them, though.
Man, all right, so we have a motion to approve, and did we get a second?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I think that covered it, right?
Did we clarify, was seeker unlisted?
It was a neg-dec unlisted.
For no further review?
Right.
Or no detrimental?
No further review after a neg-dec.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we approved that right one.
Yeah.
Did I get it?
You got it.
You got it now.
Good question. All right, so that's done, we'll stand adjourned until next month, thank you very much.
Hey, Andy, is that one?